But even our government sometimes, you know, is allowed to maintain, um, you know, a lot of information about healthcare that people are using this because they're paying for it. And, uh, insurance companies aren't paying for the share and Medicare and Medicaid aren't paying for the share. And, um, you know, that being the case, you know, I, I certainly understand why people are concerned about letting governments have this insight into, into this information. Couple of good people, they, they points that, that you made. So, I mean, I, I do think there's a fundamental difference here because, uh, we're not, it has very strong, just anyone paying for the share.
Representative Heinemson?
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, I'm just gonna add to this, you know, as a, as a, as a prescription writing physician with a D E A number, I'm very aware that I cannot write a prescription for marijuana because of the federal rules. And I understand where if someone is trying to obtain it, they feel at risk because of that. So, um, and, and I, and also, you know, just to echo, you know, we're, we're really making history here in this state with people trying to figure out the right way to, um, and I so appreciate everyone's voice in the room for that concern.
Additional questions? See, see none. Thank you both for making yourselves available today for bringing some questions.
Thank you.
I believe there was a question to hear from the department and then I would love to hear from Ms. Bellows after that.
Senator, I think he can tell us from the department.
Yes, Representative, I know Representative Hannah had a question and then any other questions for Mr. Albert?
Sure. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. The first one, are there other forms of medical data that are collected in the same way that sort of compare apples to apples, for this each of the case? In other words, if somebody requested from the CDC zip code data of people who are prescribed a possible, um, would that be available? Is that something that would be collected?
So there is a pharmaceutical monitoring program in the state where patients' data is tracked for all prescriptions. We are not advocating for that at all, so I don't want any comparison here, okay, to that program. Um, the, the purpose that we have for collecting the information in this manner is because the manner that we used to have for voluntary registration conditions was far more vulnerable. We had the data, it was stored in our data systems. We didn't want that data. It was far more vulnerable, um, at that point than what we have, what we created within ForMe. Um, so, and I heard a question about the wording of this bill. The department would be happy with an amendment to the bill to reflect that the HHS will not seek to amend its business processes within ForMe to collect name, date of birth, name, age, and date of birth. Happy to amend the bill to reflect that is nothing that we want.
Okay, so it sounds like it will be protected as much as possible on the department's side. Uh, but we've been talking a lot about the downside policy and the rest, which I think probably have their legitimate concerns. Um, but I want to talk about the upside. Collecting this data at 18 years old over a zip code, how, how is that used? What, for what purpose? So there are different, and just interrupting your testimony, said management of the program, you try and solve. Curious, um, how you would use that specifically in the management of the program.
So first of all, the legislature requires that we report back to you on this specific data. But it does, in its wisdom, did require us to do that because it does give us data that we can more effectively manage the program. So there are other specific laws in which we would, um, we get involved in if it's a minor. So we make sure that it's not just a single physician who is certifying a patient in a minor. There must be two physicians who collaborate concerning that minor necessity for medical marijuana. We participate and assist in ensuring that a physician has a secondary person who works with, so that's our role. Secondly, um, we have not known, um, there's been rapid expansion of, um, medical marijuana industry and we have not had the data to sufficiently manage where to rapidly run the state, where we need to invest resources, um, to large this growth, so.
Okay, so in terms of trends, you might see that there's been a 17 percent increase in a certain area, um, and then what would you do differently?
Sure. So if, let's say in Northern Maine, if we know we have X number of patients who are registered, um, but we know we can compare the data against caregivers, so we know that they, there's one dispensary in that area, that's a huge geographic area, um, and not, not everybody can travel. So do we need to work with the main caregivers association, um, to try and recruit additional caregivers for that area to supply, to serve a demand? Do we need to expand dispenser operations in that area? Do we need to go back up to an RFP, um, to expand dispensaries in given geographic areas to serve populations as we know? Or, or can we say, you know, we have, um, 50 percent more caregivers, uh, than we actually need in a given geographic area because the population of patients in that area is so low? Um, why, why are we seeing a little bit of proliferation of caregivers in a particular area when there's not a need to demonstrate the need?
Sure. I can see why you'd to expand and interact with, with, with caregivers. Right. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say, my, just a couple of questions after me. Um, this is very interesting to learn, but I just want to say personally, I really appreciate that it, it does sound like the department has taken great efforts to try to make sure that they don't have this personal information for our patients and really restrict our patient privacy. So I just want to say upfront, as we, as we discuss this, that I, that I, that I appreciate that some real efforts have been made there. Um, but what I hear from, so Representative Malvey, then Representative Burstein, then Representative Stuckey.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. I want to respond to a question by Representative Hammond about whether the department or someone's overlooked about trends within, say, OxyContin, you know, dispensing within certain geographic areas. There is a quasi-state agency, Canadian Health Data Organization, which is a covered entity under HIPAA, who can probably at the heft of, uh, bona fide research and provide that kind of level of information. That being said, ForMe is not part of that network, not forward the information in there, nor do they share with health implementers, who does our electronic medical records. So there is no, um, well, they're, they're not in the same network.
Representative Burstein?
Thank you, Senator. Um, Mr. Albert, I, I guess a little, um, I have two questions. You were talking about, you need two physicians for a pediatric patient. So you get information back saying there's a zip code and a patient that's under 18. So how does that work to get a second, that, that authorization that you want a second doctor signing off?
That's not how it works, actually. So as the, the built into the system is, um, prompts for the provider. Um, so the provider cannot, first off, when, when the provider logs in, they enter an identifier. The system goes out to the board of nursing or to the board, to boards of medicine in the state, confirms that the individual who's seeking to do the certification is actually a licensed provider in the state. Another level of detail that we've had unlicensed providers who are issuing certifications. So that has been eradicated. Um, and when the date of birth gets entered into the system, um, if, and if it's under the age of 18, um, it prompts the physician or nurse practitioner to say, you cannot certify solely by this, you need to find and identify with these content department or an alternative provider to collaborate with on certifying this patient. So we don't get that information. It's up to the provider to work with the family, then at that point to find an alternative provider. But we do keep a list because I would expect providers to know, to maintain who is out there who's willing, um, to certify a minor. So we do keep a list, um, help, help physicians and nurse practitioners in that regard.
So, so I'm just thinking as a provider, from the provider's side, if the federal government ever wanted this information of who's providing these prescriptions, they could get it pretty easily, right?
No, no. There's no, first off, there's no prescription ever being issued.
Or the information.
Certified. There's, I think the system that is now in place as a generated F significantly reduces the ability of the federal government to acquire any of this information.
Okay. Uh, in my, in my last question.
I should also add there, just, just at the lowest point of clarification, that the transaction, the department is a covered entity. So the transaction is required to be HIPAA compliant encryption as well. So just, so you're aware of that.
I think, I'll go, thank you.
Representative Stuckey?
Thank you. Ken, I, I'm still having trouble with the YD information, the name, address, birthday information goes back, well, in and out. Is there any reason why it, it can't be built in by the provider after you've sent back this, the form would be assigned number?
Right, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely a little bit on the medical system, so I'm informing here. I suspect that might be my fault, my apologies, um, to the committee. Um, the, the transaction is, the transaction that was described for you, um, so it's a, it's a quick round trip as it was described, so that is, because it's, it's bringing, sending back to the provider the ability to print the PDF, right? So when, if, if, if that data were not entered in the form, they would not be able to print the PDF. So they would have to re-enter that information on the provider's side. It would then take another quick round trip to be able to print the data that the provider then entered into the data fields. Is that, I'm looking to my, I mean, so just the ability to simply just, um, enter the information, entering the information into the print and having the PDF created, it would happen again if more information were entered. It's, it's, so, so the second time around, if it came back to them with only partially filled data fields, and then they entered in the name, address, excuse me, it would do the same thing again. The system would, would direct that PDF in the same manner that it was originally directed. So it's not that it couldn't do it, but.
So that, if, the question is accessing the form for, for, to put input into the form at, back at the provider's office? That, that can't happen?
What can't happen right now is for the, for the provider to then enter the information, the identifiable information, and print it from that portal at that point.
Is there, is there a reason for that? Uh, is there, is that a, is that a policy reason or is that a technology reason?
From my perspective, it's a technology issue. It's a, you, the information that we're going to print it's going to be in, in the data field. It's not a, if, if there's an, if there's a mechanism that I'm unaware of, I'm happy to explore that, but I'm not aware of a mechanism to allow that to happen.
Well, one thing that comes to mind, yeah, no, I understand.
I should also say, patients really like this? They really do. Our feedback from patients has been very favorable. Yeah, I just, you're hearing some negative testimony here today, but patients like having, um, the, to receive that card at the point of service with the designation card. And since implementation, we have not had one inquiry about fraudulent activity, not one.
No, I, I, I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm just curious about the, the loop and whether that's, why it's a closed loop and why it couldn't be opened up to be.
I think another reason for that, Representative Stuckey, is that, um, there, there have, there was some integrity issues with various providers. Um, we have collaborated with the board of medicine, with certain providers who were, um, didn't follow, um, the laws with regard to issuing certifications. And, um, so this, we've not had one case where we've had to work with the board since this either because the data, there's no way to work around the system, to work around the laws with the way this is structured. So from my perspective and working with the experts and working with the provider community, by the way, we worked with the board of medicine and the board of medical implementation, this is the, the, from a patient's perspective, the safest mechanism that also allows for integrity of the program with regards to statutory compliance and regulatory compliance and the ability to most effectively, um, manage the program with regard to the data that we are required to collect.
Representative Gethin?
Thank you. Again, one issue, I just, again, you have to stay a little bit more, explain to me again why you think, why this is more protective of the patient information basis.
So when a patient wanted, patients, many patients decided to have a registration card. So we eliminated, the original law, you will recall, required a patient to actually register with the, with the department. That was eliminated. And when that occurred, we also allowed patients to come in and get their information back from the department. But those patients, though, who wanted to get, who wanted to register, they had to send that information in to us.
They sent it in, in a paper form or in a?
Yeah, right, they, they, they fill in application, we, and we issued the card to them. So that information sat in the state.
For the paper form that you received, what happened to that paper form at the end of the day? Was it shredded or was it?
No, maintained in file.
Okay.
And it was, the information was on the form, was transferred, was transformed digitally.
And had all this in personal information?
Name, date of birth, address, everything.
Okay.
Entered into the system, we issued the card to them.
Yeah.
And we maintain that information in database.
So you keyed it into a database and the information was maintained in a database?
Right.
And who maintained that database? Did he spoke or was it?
No, it was the department.
So, and it's, can, is it a?
It's an agent, it's an agency licensing management system.
Yeah.
Again, the department, Department Professional Management Regulation has contracted with this entity to create, um, a licensing management system.
Yeah.
And, um, the, it is, there is encryption involved, there, maintenance of that, but it is a database that's maintained on servers. O, O I T servers.
State, state, O I T. Not, there's not an outside vendor managing these data.
Correct.
State, out, state outside vendors manage the syst, create, you know, do the, do the coding, would do the modifications, but it's a state maintained system.
Server.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for the department? See none? Could I, um?
Well, that's what I could say, Senator. Yes, please. I just, um, you know, the vulnerability, um, the issues around vulnerability also, my question, we have physicians and providers who are using electronic medical records in their own, in their own offices. There's nobody who's raising a hand to say, hey, what's the integrity of your office, of your office system here? I'm concerned that my name and date of birth, my medical history, why I'm using medical marijuana is sitting in your office, in an electronic system on your server. Where is your server? How secure is your server? Where's the argument about that?
So, um, I say one more thing and then there's two more questions that pop up. So I guess, is there a reason why, so I assume the, the physician puts it in and it prints out at the same places. Is there a reason, is there a reason why, or is it just because we're using wireless technology for everything it is? Is there a reason why that information has to be brought, like go over the internet or for that to print it out? Why can't, what, why, why is it something that can be printed?
The only, the only reason is that I just heard the technical response to it for the first time, actually.
Yeah.
Is that, um, in order to convert that, those data elements into a printable, printable PDF and send that back to a law for printing, when I, I'm paraphrasing.
Well, before you, I guess, don't leave us playing with words of mouth, or just an observation.
It is an observation of the argument, uh, Mr. Albert, about the argument about, say, health info net and electronic medical records is frequently dealt with, with, uh, and opt-out provision. Consumers have the right to opt-out having their doctor maintain their health, or health information, maintain their electronic medical records. And I think it could be something that would be ranked here, but then it may, the consequence of which may be they don't get it served.
They can opt-out, I agree with you, for health info net.
Correct.
But not all providers maintaining their EMRs in relationship with health info net.
That's true.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tollers?
Just to speak to the question again a little more detail about why does this name address information need to be transmitted across the, to a web server somewhere, only to be sent back to the provider's computer for printing? It's simply that, um, the software that does that, the translation of the name and address and whatever into a printable file is done on the web server. Now, could it be done on the provider's computer? Yes, it could. But then the software would have to be provided for the, for the doctor's computer. It may be using, you know, provided in different computers, uh, rolling or using a smartphone. So the, the, the purpose of, uh, of this system is to make it independent of that. Anybody with a web browser is able to use the system regardless of the type of computer they're using. Could it be done if we provided them with software to install on their machines? Yes, although in your language, uh, you see questions about whether that software on their machines is secure and is safe for information. Um, if you want to be absolutely sure, I suppose they could simply type the code up on select, or if anyone else.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's one of my questions is if, if, is there a way for people who do have these concerns to, I guess, create an option where this is a concern you have, you could, the physician could fill in a can or, 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 or are we opening a can of worms, right? A big can of worms? Well, we'll, I'll, so. Representative Burstein?
Thank you, Senator. I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be an easy fix just to have on your patient information just zip code and age and get rid of the rest of it so that nobody has an issue with it?
Well, it's because you have to have the information on the card. So you can't have just the, the zip code and age.
And the doctor could type the card.
Um, so, see, no other questions for Mr. Tollers? Can we hear from, from Ms. Bellows? I think some of the, the bills we're dealing with today might be some of this one, so hopefully they're not all going to take this long. But I know privacy issues can get very complicated.
Um, so I think when Representative Russell was putting together the amendment to her bill, she was concerned about the vulnerabilities that occur with transmission. And because of the short notice, a computer expert that I worked with regularly when I was at A C L U could not be here today. But he said it would be very easy to create a botnet which would intercept or feed up on an automated basis and compile that for whatever purposes. And given the federal prohibition of medical marijuana, this creates concern among privacy advocates and within the patient community. There are two really easy technical solutions and perhaps ForMe can, can attest to whether these, what technological difficulty there would be. One was suggested by providers in the one-on-one meetings with the department, and that is that when they type into the system, the provider types in their license type, their password, chooses whether this is a new certification, a recertification, or replacement copy, enters in non-identifying information including age, gender, even diagnosis, in addition to zip code. The department wants that information. And then the system would allow the PDF reader program to open so that the provider could download a PDF form, that they could then fill in the personally identifiable information on the provider's computer and print that. Why are people less concerned about provider hacking than big system hacking? It's because anytime you centralize the data, even in a protected system like ForMe, you're vulnerable to potential hacking and potential data breach. Certainly potentials at the local provider level as well, that's any centralization creates. Another potentially simple system might be the provider enters in the information that the department needs to collect, which no one is objecting to, and then the department mails or just emails to the provider with the information that they need. The appropriate PDF documents that the provider could then fill in the fields with the personally identifiable information and print. So those are two ways in which the provider could receive the appropriate PDF information from ForMe that they could then print locally, that would keep a wall, keep that patient data in the doctor's office, which is what patients are so concerned about.
I just want to say, first of all, I, I think, um, I think one, I think one response, and I wouldn't say that it would be completely irrational response, rational response to this might be like, well, why would the federal government, why would the federal government do that? You have to be paranoid, paranoid to think they'd do that, right? But we could have said that just as easily about our, why would the federal government want our cell phone records?
Exactly.
A couple of years ago, and apparently they do. So, I do think it's, it is appropriate to approach these issues with caution. Um, Senator Hassel?
I just want to say, plain truth, you'd be sending back the, um, information to be able to fill into a certificate that's blank then, with no name. It would seem to me that that would be a very juicy thing for somebody to want to hack because then they get to stick their own name in if they're able to gather that piece of, um, transmission.
Um, my computer geek friend who works in computer security horrified me by telling me actually he could take the transmission information that the department is sending and nab and do that. He could delete the patient fields, he could change those fields, he could manufacture those certificates. He said he could, I could probably find someone to do it for $15,000. I told him I wasn't interested in finding someone to do it. But anyway, um, so certainly that is a risk, but it exists under the current scheme.
No more risk than a current.
Right. And that's where, I mean, the providers have suggested, um, I mean, that PDF that gets sent to them doesn't necessarily have to be completely blank. It could have the number that's associated with that certificate so that there is a tracking system for the number certificates that a doctor is using. So they can't just, you know, print 200.
Additional questions? Representative Gethin?
I asked Mr. Albert a question about the previous system because, you know, I'm, in many respects favorably disposed towards Representative Russell's amendment, but I don't want to go back to a system that is even less secure than, than raises, raises more concerns than what is implemented right now. So you heard Mr. Albert's response to the fact that, out of the previous system, the department actually maintained paper copies of all these applications that were sent in and actually maintained all this information on a database. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to respond.
Uh, that system was voluntary. So under the current system prior to January, patients had a choice. They could register with the state, send their personally identifiable information to the state, to get a patient registration card that they could carry with them for protection, perhaps against law enforcement inquiries at the local level. Or they could choose as a patient not to register with the state at all. Um, and many patients don't, never did register with the state. This new certification system, I don't think that, that caregivers or patients are concerned about the certification system, but it creates a mandatory registry because every single patient's data has to be transmitted across that system. So the system used to be an opt-in. Do you want to register? Do you want to take that risk? Now there's no, there's no opt-out, there's no opt-in.
If we, if we simply, I'm not necessarily proposing this, I think we'd need, would require a lot more consideration, but if we did make it an opt-out system, would that be a concern? But if we did make it an opt-out system, would that would be a concern?
I think that would create some data challenges. Again, I think that the simpler solution, Representative Russell's bill is prohibiting the transfer of this personally identifiable information. The simpler solution are one of the two solutions that I recommended.
Representative Sanderson.
So what you're essentially saying, Miss Fellows, is if you put in statute what the department isn't doing at this time, you'd be satisfied?
So the department acknowledged that they are requiring the transmission of the personally identifiable information. And the transmission, although the vulnerability is only from someone who is engaged in hacking behavior, it's still there. And we've experienced enough hacking, even of name.gov, to recognize that there are interests, whether it's from the federal government or whether it's from malicious interests in having access potentially to this information. So we're concerned about transmission, but certainly it was gratifying to hear the department say that they do not object to putting in statute or prohibition on collection by the department of personally identifiable information for patients. That certainly, that we appreciate that very much.
And I think that maybe a better way to go would be amendment at this time.
That would definitely leave the vulnerability of the transmission as we've expressed.
Representative Anderson.
Well, one of the fears that folks are also having is that the department is collecting the information. If you statutorily forbid it, which for the record, I don't believe they are. So if you statutorily forbid it, at least that would be one half of the question solved.
That certainly would alleviate some of the concerns that I've heard in the patient community because, you know, as this computer expert that I've been chatting with said, it's very easy to put and code a deletion of the data out of the transmission so that only the appropriate data is transferred to the department. And we've heard the department say they don't want this personally identifiable information. I think that would, but it would just require a coding change. So having a statutory prohibition, I think, would be a safeguard that would be worthwhile for privacy purposes.
Representative Gattin. The current amendment says the Department of Health Information Services shall not require healthcare providers to send personally identifying information. If we change that to say, Department of Health Information Services shall not collect personally identifying information, that satisfies some of your concerns, but not all of the concerns that you raise? Is that fair?
Yes, yes. It would certainly satisfy the collection concerns. There's still vulnerabilities with transmission.
Representative Heinrich.
Thank you. But they're still collecting it. It's really the retention. So you still have to collect it to send it back, right?
It's the storage of it. So they'll not.
Retain.
They'll not retain.
Retain.
Well, my understanding is Informee is the collection agent, but the department is actually not collecting. That may be too.
Whatever, whatever word.
They're collecting it in order to send it back.
And I think, again.
Yeah, well.
Can you repeat the first, there are two options that you talked about.
Yeah, so the first option, I'm reading this because this is one of the providers who participated in meetings. Dr. Sulek participated in meetings with the department. He suggested that providers go into the online portal, type in their license type and license number, choose the option whether it's a new certificate, a recertification, or a replacement copy, enter in basic non-identifying information about the patient, depending on the department's desire. He recommended age, gender, even diagnosis, and county or geographic region. He recommended that then the system could generate a PDF which opens in a PDF reader. And my understanding is we've been talking about PDFs this whole time. That's what, it's not some sort of complicated software. And there are some significant security vulnerabilities of PDF, but. And that PDF contains a certificate with a unique patient number that's either newly assigned or the same as the previous certification entered above. Date of certification, date of expiration, medical provider giving an info. With blank fields, the provider could enter for name, date of birth, and address. The provider then could save that completed PDF to upload into the electronic medical record and print the certificate on a social media paper.
Doesn't sound like that solves very much because still the transmission issue. What the state does with the information is to send it back. So it's really the transmission. So now you're asking a PDF to be formatted and then saved and repopulated. There's a lot more steps, but still the transmission, that's the issue.
So I think his proposal is suggesting that the department send automatically a PDF that they could then download and that they can log out of the portal and then populate the personally identifiable information.
There's one question. I'd like to, for a conference system, but would this be a good time to return these? Yeah, let's.
So we're just going to break for a couple minutes to discuss.